I've had like five meetings already.
Just a, just a Styrofoam cup. I don't have my glasses. Huh? I don't have that. I don't have, no. I, I took it home to Washington and brought it back.
About time.
Oh, I'm gonna set that shit up here. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Awfully quiet.
You got it.
By three.
Chair will call the February 7th, 2023 meeting of the City Council, City of Springfield order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please.
Will do.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Desenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Ware, a quorum is present. Thank you. Uh, we do have, uh, two presentations. First one's a proclamation to the Lutheran High School Girls Volleyball Team. So if you'd like to come forward.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Thank you.
I only know who they are.
Hello, hello.
I see Lu High signs all over town. Right on.
Congratulations.
You can come back here if you want to.
Yeah, you can take pictures. Feel free to. Uh, yeah, it's a great day when we can recognize our youth of our community and especially, uh, not only their on-court expertise and skills and success, but also their off-court. And this year, or this time, we're here to recognize the Lutheran High School Girls Basketball Team where their.
Volleyball.
I'm sorry. Yep, volleyball.
That'd be a big basketball team, wouldn't it?
So, uh, we really appreciate you coming and being recognized for your, uh, placement at state. And the proclamation reads, whereas character, tenacity, and heart are words that describe the 2022 Lutheran High School Volleyball Team. And tonight, as a city, we honor their successes and achievements. And whereas the Lutheran High School Girls Volleyball Team faced adversities entering this season from mind subsidence that altered their entire school year to player injuries and even early deficits in the game. These student athletes kept on their mission of being unsinkable. And whereas, and you'll have to forgive me if I mispronounce any names, Kaylee Burkschnider, Hope Carroll, Phoebe Cochran, Maddie Cox, McKenna Cox, Ally Davis, Kalina Herman, Aubrienne Landry, Reese Rivas, Anne Schlehan, Ela, Ela?
Ayla.
Ayla, Ayla Seidel, Mina Taylor, and Piper Taylor weathered these storms and in the end achieved the IHSA Class 1A Runner-Up State Volleyball Championship, the highest sports title their school has ever received. And whereas these lucky 13 athletes showcased their exceptional skills throughout the season, placing first place in the Crusader Classic, first place in the New Berlin Tournament, and beating Springfield High School to place first in the Triad Tournament. And whereas this season brought many other successes for this team, including the 400th win for Coach Katie McCully, along with Kalina Herman reaching her 2,000 career assists, Kaylee Burkschnider reaching 1,000 career digs, and McKenna Cox reaching 1,000 kills, along with 1,000 digs in her career. And whereas the team's accomplishments were noted in their athletes' achievements, including McKenna Cox being named Player of the Year for the State Journal Register and State All-Tournament Team, Kaylee Burkschnider and Kalina Herr- Herman making All-Area First Team, and McKenna Cox, Kaylee Burkschnider, Kalina Herman, and Ally Davis for making All-State. And whereas we commend Coaches Katie McCullough and Pat Wisnewski and Michelle Cox for leading this team not only as coaches but as mentors. We also appreciate the Principal Zach Klug and the administration for their teaching, instruction, and guidance of these student athletes. And whereas we want to thank the parents and their families for their unconditional love and support for these athletes. The climb for these student athletes was tough, but it showed everyone that reaching the top was worth it. Now therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with our City Council and residents, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, shall be Lutheran High School Girls Volleyball Day. In the City of Springfield, we call upon all citizens to recognize the achievements of this team and celebrate with the athletes and coaches their IHSA Class 1A Runner-Up State Championship. Congratulations.
Get in there, Mayor.
Good guy gave him a fight.
They're, they're in your ward. Get in there.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I don't have a lot to say, but thank you to the City of Springfield for your continued support. And I'm just incredibly proud of the girls with all the adversity that we fought this year or faced and then battled through. The things that they were able to accomplish is amazing. I can't even put into words. And he did a pretty great job putting that into words. So thank you so that we have this as a memory as well. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done, ladies.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And actually, Katie's, uh, father is a former firefighter. Oh, and her brother's current one. Gilman's her last name. Made an A. So congratulations. And next we'll have Tristan Brown come up from, uh, Justine Peterson. He has a report and slide presentation like to present.
Oh, absolutely. Sorry. A little too eager. Is it on?
Yep.
And Justine Peterson, just to give some framework, uh, we partnered with them, um, about a year ago, maybe a year plus, to form a micro loan program with, uh, local banks. It's a $2 million loan portfolio that the City Council helped with, uh, with $300,000 allocation that made it possible. So we appreciate, uh, the council's support and Tristan for this update.
Absolutely. So my name is Tristan Brown. I'm the Illinois Operations Manager for Justine Peterson Housing and Reinvestment, uh, Corporation. And, uh, we're a CDFI Community Developmental Financial Institution that, um, has been housed at Springfield now since July of 2021. Well, since I was housed in September 2021, the program has been here since July of 2021. Um, and since then, my associate Kristen Willis has taken over as the Asset Building Counselor, uh, housed in the Office of Planning and Economic Development, furthering, uh, the visions for this program. And we're ready for. All right. As I said, we're a CDFI Community Developmental Financial Institution. Uh, we're backed by the U.S. Department of Treasury. Uh, we work directly with the SBA. We're a SBA micro lender, meaning that we, um, originate loans up to $50,000. That is the definition for a micro loan. We're also a HUD certified counseling agency that goes hand in hand with our credit building, uh, which we have also brought to the forefront in our, uh, Springfield office. Uh, we've, in our 25-plus-year history, we've deployed over 240 million total and to, and helped over 13,500 businesses in that time. And we are the highest-volume SBA micro lender in the state of Illinois. And we've actually been off and on in the City of Springfield since 2015. And so our total groundwork, uh, since 2015 is a little over 3.5 million with a little over 250 small businesses helped. Uh, we've partnered with the Springfield Black Chamber, the local Small Business Development Center, and fellow small, uh, business ecosystem providers like Innovate Springfield and Downtown Springfield, Inc. Uh, some of our bank partners include Carrollton Bank, Bank of Springfield, Illinois National Bank, PNC, and US Bank. And we also have additional sources of capital that we use through our SBA micro loan fund and the, uh, funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury. And now, as I said before, uh, we previously la- launched the most recent program in July of 2021. And since then, we've deployed over, a little over 1.9 million to, uh, over 130 businesses. And the average loan size on that is around a little over 14,000. Um, and the demographic information is also up there. Uh, as you can see, it's pretty even on the female and male, uh, percentage of units. Uh, we, we do, uh, promote entrepreneurship in the minority community, and that is why, uh, that number may be skewed a little bit. And, uh, we also helped layer programs whenever the, uh, cannabis grant bill had came out. And we were able to, therefore, those who, uh, may have not qualified for that, we were able to maybe bring a chance and fill the gap in financing at that point. And here are the stats broken down by ward as well, uh, through the number of units for each loan originated for each ward. And then I wanted to end it off with a success story. And some of you may know this gentleman. Uh, he's the owner of Truckin' Good Food. He, uh, sits out next to the Lincoln Public Library every now and again. Uh, and he tells me that public officials really like his food. And his name's Nicholas Buscher. He saw working capital funds to hire an extra employee and pay entrance fees for the Summer 2022 events. He was therefore, uh, this picture is actually from the Fat Ass 5K. He was able to, um, afford being a vendor at that event, not only that event, but the, um, state fair event as well. And his food trailer offers a classic American fare, including burgers, fries, and homemade apple pie fries. Now, I'd love to open it up for any questions. Yeah.
Alderman Redpath.
So on your chart, um, you got it broke down on female, male, minority, black, Hispanic, and black female. Is, is the minority category all other? Or how?
So the minority includes all black and Hispanic. Uh, it does not include only female businesses. So it would be black, female, Hispanic, and black. So every person of color.
I'm still confused. It says minority, and then you got two different other ca- categories. You got three other categories.
So this is all of those three categories combined.
Oh, okay. They're combined. All right. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Sure. Alderman Gregory.
Might just be more of a comment. Um, I, I just want to, uh, say thank you to the whole Justine Peterson program and everybody who's been working on it. It has played out, um, dividends in our community and, and, and one of the things that is important, um, for us to really close our, our income disparities and, and housing disparities is, is, uh, working with, with, uh, companies like you. And, um, you know, as we roll out our new TIF programs and things, we're going to be leaning on Justine Peterson program as well to really help, um, on housing initiatives too. So I appreciate you and, and good work, and I look forward to, uh, working with you guys again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just had a comment, Mayor. I, I, I do want you to know, uh, the importance it has been to some of the people in Ward 3 who traditionally couldn't get, get help from a traditional bank and through the traditional bank. And that role that you play in, in, in getting them started is so, so crucial. And, um, I'm just hoping more, more of this type of program spreads throughout the country because, I mean, it's just the fact that some people just can't get loans the traditional way.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so we did have, we have a new ordinance, uh, well, the ordinance was last year, uh, but we have the program started for, um, non-TIF, homes that are in non-TIF, um, neighborhoods.
Sure.
Can get exterior rehab, um, support from the city. Would Justine Peterson be one source of funds for people who need to, you know, it's, it's a reimbursement program? Can they come to you for like?
Now, this is mainly commercial lending.
Commercial lending. Okay. So it's not so much.
With our, with our consumer lending, we do, uh, so let me kind of clarify on that. So with our consumer lending, those are usual small, uh, small dollar loans that will help clear up collections and get them to the point of homeownership. So we, and that's where our credit building and HUD certified counseling agency comes in as well. We work with them along the way to get them to that point, but we actually don't do.
But you release them kind of once, at the point of homeownership. That's not at Justine Peterson.
Exactly.
Okay. So it was, they, they'll have to look somewhere else, and I'll keep working on that.
But if they, I mean, if they need to take steps ahead of time to be able to qualify, we would definitely be a great program for that, to help them.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've had some discussions, uh, with Justine Peterson on a higher level about, uh, doing a homeownership or a home improvement program. So hopefully we'll get to that point.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the city council.
Moved.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001, 2023-007, and 2023-008 remain tabled during committee. Is there any movement on any of those? Next item on the agenda is document number 2022-574, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW23-11-82 with Green Track LLC for demolition and site clearance of 66 units in Popular Place in amount not to exceed $1,345,370 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-574 on final passage.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we approve this and move it forward.
Second.
They're moving second for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I'm, I'm a yes.
The ordinance passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2022-575, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,345,370 for expected developer reimbursements to accommodate the demolition and site clearance of Popular Place for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-575 on final passage.
Yes, Mayor. I ask that we approve this one as well on final passage.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023-010, an ordinance approving the appointment of Terry Wilson to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-010 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023-047, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Charles K. Durning for the purchase of real estate located at 1336 East North Grand Avenue in the amount of $42,250 and closing cost in the amount of $1,500. And for a total amount not to exceed $43,750 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project. Useful segment 6A for the Office of Public Works for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-047 on final passage.
Second.
They're moving second for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I just closed the wrong window. I'm a yes on this.
Okay. So 10 voting yes, none voting no. Uh, next item on the agenda is not needed for emergency passage, so, uh, be suspended with rules in place on first reading. That's 2023-048. Supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,112,158 to cover additional salary costs in fiscal year '23 for the Springfield Fire Department. Chair will entertain a motion, motion to place it on the, um, on first reading, agenda number 2023-048. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules in place on first reading, agenda number 20.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, what's that?
I apologize.
That's right.
This is listed under emergency passage, not first reading.
They, uh, said it could go the regular route.
Okay. Just thank you.
According to Director McCarthy. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2023-049, ordinance amending Chapter 153, Section 153.112 pertaining to site suitability, Chapter 153, Section 153.157 pertaining to street design, and Chapter 155, Section 155.106 pertaining to all drive-up service facilities of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. They're moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2023-050, resolution authorizing the release of the minutes and audio recording of the November 2nd, 2021 executive session for the City of Springfield Council, City Council.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council? I do have, uh, two things. One is the USCPA.
Sorry. Request to speak is slow.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, there we go.
Actually, I wanted to speak on that last, um, it doesn't matter, it's first reading. So, um, I have some questions because, um, they, they kind of go around, and I'm pleased to see this, um, resolution releasing the minutes from the November 2nd, 2021 executive session. My first question is actually more for corporation counsel. Um, Mr. Circle, I just need to be a little more clear on what exactly the standards are, um, for us to release information about an executive session topic prior to those, those recordings actually being released by the council.
I can send something to you, some guidance on it.
Well, I, I would like guidance. I'd like to know why there was a news story about an executive session that was, I mean, th- there were details about this particular meeting in the media this week, and I didn't release them. I don't remember this council acting on that. And I certainly disagree with the way counsel was portrayed in those, those comments. So I, how was that allowed to happen? Are we allowed to just kind of give summaries of exec session? Because my understanding is that we keep that confidential until it's been released by full council action.
This, this very issue, I think you had asked that same question. This was brought up, I think, back in maybe August.
Yep.
And I had, I actually sent you some materials about that, I think, at that time.
And I still don't understand how we're supposed to, as council members, go into a session that's outside of a public meeting, have an informational-only conversation, and then have, that is supposed to be kept confidential due to very strict limitations, and then hear a summary, which I disagree with the summary, come out in the media later.
Yeah, I think that the, the, the thing that happened in August had to do, I, and again, I'll have to go back and read the email. I think I laid it out in the email, uh, that there had been a discussion, I think, in the media with council members making comments about the executive session, and then you had asked why the mayor commented on it.
Right, but this was not the similar situation. I, I, let me just be really clear. My concern with this particular, um, res- this particular meeting and the comments that came out in the Illinois Times are that it was basically, sounded like the council had a consensus of agreement on an action that should be taken, um, in regards to a debt that was owed to the city. Um, we don't take final action in, in exec session. That is not done. And I will vouch for every member around this.
Point of order.
How?
We'll let her finish.
What's the point of order?
I said you can finish.
Thank you. I'd like to know, we didn't, that, that was not an action that we did. Executive session, no one in this, around this council has taken final action in, in behind closed doors because that's not how this council operates. We operate out here in the public.
Yeah, that was expressed to the reporter by corporation counsel. So what they print and what makes the paper and what doesn't is, you know, unfortunately, you know, or maybe it's fortunately, we don't control that.
Well, I, I, I just want to be real clear that that was, this, this council, I mean, the other bodies have gotten in trouble for, um, doing action, taking final action, or coming to a final agreement in an executive session. That's not what that's for. We're, we're a public body, and we take our final actions out here in public, for better or worse. But I, that was absolutely not the case. So, um, since this is, well, okay, I'll leave my questions there.
That's what was expressed to the reporter. Alderman McMenamin.
Yeah, point number one is, I think.
It's actually Redpath's, yeah.
Well, uh, he wanted a point of order.
A point of order goes ahead of anything else, Mr. Mayor.
You have to be recognized for the point of order. Then it'll go Alderman Redpath, Gregory, McMen- or McMenamin, Hanauer.
Yeah, so a point of order always goes ahead of everything else. But the point of order is the good alderwoman, Ward 8, is just saying, how can we be discussing about something that took place in executive session, and then she goes ahead and starts talking about the executive session?
I gave no details about that session.
Because what she said was she didn't think there was any consensus in that executive session. So, um, I don't know, and I know you went and listened to the tapes yesterday. So I just think if, we have to be consistent. If you're going to say we shouldn't be talking about it, then don't talk about it. That's the point I'm making. That's the point of order.
May I respond, Mayor, since I was mentioned in that comment?
Sure.
Thank you. The only thing I gave was a general summary of the fact that this council does not violate the Open Meetings Act by taking final action behind closed doors. And if you want a point of order that, that's your choice.
Yeah, a point of order that as well.
Good. I'm going to go for three tonight.
It's like a ping pong match.
You know what? No final action was taken, uh, in that executive session, since you're bringing it up again.
So we agree with each other. This is good, Joe.
That is good. Thank you. Alderman Redpath.
Well, my issue is not this one. I, I have another issue if you wanted, if somebody else was wanting to comment on this, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Any other comments on?
Good. Can I?
Yep. Alderman Hanauer.
Well, I guess, I guess my concern is, we, we talked about a debt, and, and it was in the paper. And I guess my question is, when did going into an executive council to discuss something, um, forego all our rules to where, uh, contracts don't have to be approved by city council? Because in a sense, that's, that's what I feel, feels happened here. Somehow, there was, there was an agreement of some sort. Um, none of us have seen the agreement. We don't know when the agreement was. I, I went back and listened to, to the, to the executive session. I also listened to the whole thing on the Wyndham. I'll never get those two hours back today that I sat through and listened. And I will, I will tell you that from the pers- one perspective, kind of a side note, I was very proud of the council, how we, we ask a lot of questions, and we did, we did what we were supposed to do on that. And, and there was a lot of intelligent questions, and, and I thought we all, you know, did pretty doggone good. But, but my concern is that executive session was November 2nd.
21.
Uh, 21. He came back, our first time, we, we discussed a lot of it, was July 19th. Now, I can't talk. I've got, I've got all the times, I've got certain things time stamped that Al, uh, I can't pronounce his last name, said in council here, but I, I can't discuss it because we haven't opened up. it because we haven't opened up the, you know, the minutes on, and, you know, that wouldn't be fair, because that would be releasing some. I don't, I don't want to do that. But when we do it, I'll, I'll make my points. But I'm just concerned that we, you know, apparently there's been a, been somebody, some, this, we gave in and had a contract of some sort for payment, a pass due, and we never saw it. And I'm sorry, but going in there does not give anybody carte blanche to bypass the city council. And that's the way I see it. And I would like to see the contract. I'd like to see when the terms of the contract was, because we talked about something on the 2nd of November, 2021, and eight and a half months later was when, when everything came. And the conditions we talked about in, in November never happened. And that's, that's a concern. So I would like, I'd like to see, see the paperwork and what went on. To my, the way I believe, it didn't get passed by city council, so therefore, the debt's still owed, because it was not, it was not finalized by this body. And I don't know what else to say, and I'll just reserve comment until we're able to release the, the minutes and the audio. Thank you.
I've got more to say about this, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, Gregory?
You know, I wasn't going to speak on this, and I won't speak on the details, but I read the article too, and I just, I just felt like Zirkle's comments was appropriate, and, you know, as far as accuracy, I, you know, when we go behind there, I try not to say nothing because I don't know all the rules, but, you know, I did understand clearly of what was, what was going on, and, you know, with that situation, tough situation, but, you know, this ain't the first time that some executive session has come out, or some, you know, the personal details of one of our employees come out to the Illinois Times, this is, you know, these type of things are, slow us down and it takes our focus away. And, you know, I just hope we can keep focusing on getting things done, because this is quite ridiculous. Thank you.
Alderman McMenamin?
It's ridiculous.
I think, you know, the story was about, I assume the story was initiated by the other candidate for mayor. And, you know, the reporter's never going to tell us what sources of information he had about cancellation of debt, or why this is now an issue that Treasure Busher has decided to raise in a public way with the reporter. And I doubt that Treasure Busher will tell us what she knew or what she disclosed to the reporter. So if our mayor and our city attorney get ambushed with information, of course they got to respond, but the best response is disclosure of the, of the 10 minutes, of the 10 minutes. And I'm glad it's going to happen, because, you know, no aldermen spoke up during those 10 minutes, except Alderman Hanauer and Redpath.
I did.
And it'll be very interesting to see how the public interprets your comments. You want me to say what I think you said?
Well, we'll just let the tapes speak for themselves, the audio.
Yeah. And you know what? I will say this.
So I'm still talking.
There was never a vote that we took back there, Joe, because we can't.
Well, I'm going to say this, I still got the floor.
Point of order.
You declined to answer the question, so I'm going to move on. What took place back there was, in my opinion, implicit authority for the mayor and the city attorney to handle a troublesome debt.
That's ridiculous, Joe.
Point of order.
Oh, my goodness. Would you stop?
The point of order.
Would you stop?
Nine more days and you're gone, Joe.
Alderman McMenamin has the floor.
Okay, let me just repeat what Redpath said.
Alderman McMenamin has the floor, and then we'll go point of order, then Treasure Busher, then Alderman Redpath.
I think what's happening-
Or actually Alderman Conley, then Alderman-
We're touching some nerves here, and some folks don't like-
Because you're playing politics, Joe.
Let him finish, please.
Oh, so that story in the Illinois Times was not politics, huh?
I had no idea, Joe.
Oh, you don't?
No.
I'm surprised.
Do you? You think you do. You don't know. You make this crap up, Joe, and you expect everybody to believe it.
So you keep grabbing the floor. So you keep grabbing the floor.
Go ahead, Alderman, McMenamin. Go ahead and finish, please, and then Alderman Hanauer on the point of order.
I think it's very positive that this council tonight is just going to release the transcript and let everyone draw their own conclusions. I think our mayor and city attorney did the right thing to take us into that room and get a discussion, and if you read, when you listen to the tape, you'll see that city attorney Zirkle gave a very complete disclosure, and laid out the facts, and the, the mayor and the, and our attorney asked for feedback, and guess what? There was no pushback. There was no pushback against compromise and settlement of the debt, because we thought the company was going to go into bankruptcy. And if it goes into bankruptcy, we'd likely get nothing.
You just announced everything that was in there.
Yeah, that's right. Because everyone else is talking about it, so.
We managed to not give the details out, Joe.
No, that's your opinion, and you're being inconsistent, so that's what I was, that's what the point of order was.
Well, I'm pretty consistent with the story.
I'm glad he can do whatever he wants.
Alderman Hanauer.
Well, it's a free country still, Mr. Hanauer.
Thank you.
And so if-
Well, here's a-
Finish.
I'm, I'll just conclude by saying, I'm glad we're releasing this, and I think in conclusion also, that I suspect candidate Busher was trying to make this politicized, period.
Alderman Hanauer.
When, I would still like to ask, when we go into executive session, does that trump every, all our rules regarding any type of settlements, anything coming through the city council? Because I, I don't think, there was two people that spoke on that tape, two aldermen. It was Alderman Redpath and I. Now, I don't know, we got, I don't think we're that powerful to where two, two can count for six. So I don't know where you said, how you get that we, that gave implicit rights to do whatever they want and not bring it back to the council. You would be livid if you were against this. You would be livid.
Let me tell you something, can I respond to that?
You don't have the floor.
Yep. Okay, it's Corporation Council, you want to provide some clarity if you can? Or do you want to do it in writing, or what?
No, the, just very briefly, I think the discussion, the resolution is the step, technically, the council has to approve release of minutes, or, you know, materials. So the resolution is just to document or to approve that process. And I think there can be more discussion about the, the city council has adopted policies for collection by the utility. There are ordinances in place that use, if this had been sent to the collection agency, ProCom, they would have been entitled to a 22% deduction as a fee. By doing it ourselves through the collection process, we ended up with approximately 14 or 15, 14 or 15% deduction. And I think we can talk about, it's a very unusual set of circumstances, because the only thing they did was submit the payment. There were no contracts or anything of that nature. They simply submitted the payment that was then brought up in front of the council, I think, that day that triggered some of the discussion of Alderman Conley that you mentioned. And so they submitted the payment, the city accepted the payment. Now, in reverse, interestingly, if the, if there was a strong opinion to reject it, we would give the 1.2 million back and then sue them for the 1.4 million. So that's the, you know, that's the scenario that we've talked about, but it certainly, I think the process right now would be to just address, do you want to release the, you know, the materials from the meeting?
Treasure Busher?
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. I appreciate you acknowledging me to talk. Alderman McMenamin, this is specifically geared towards you, even though the chair is the mayor. This is a professional environment. We are not to talk politics in here, and I think we should uphold that professional environment as elected officials. Secondly, any monies that happen to go with the City of Springfield's FEIN number are the taxpayers' dollars, and the taxpayers are allowed to know what goes on with their dollars. Thank you.
Alderman, or Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I just need to clarify a little bit more, because first of all, I did not disclose anything that happened in that meeting, except that, as is stated in this Illinois Times article, there was not a consensus to get as much as possible. There was no conversation. And Alderman Hanauer, you're correct. As loud as you and Alderman Redpath can get, you do not speak for 10 people around this council. You don't. I know. You want to.
Dang it.
Two people on this council cannot, by any definition, become a consensus of this very diverse body. And the reason this is important is because it's the Open Meetings Act. I mean, that is a critical, critical cornerstone of how public dollars and public actions need to be made. They need to be made in the open. They need to be made so that people, we can disagree with each other, we can be largely respectful in how we do that, but we do that out here so that people know what we're doing with those tax dollars. When we say grant money coming in, and it's federal grant money, that's not just tooth fairy money. Those are federal dollars. It's all our tax dollars, and we make these decisions in this room, not behind that closed door. It's, Mayor, I had no idea. When that bill was paid, we were told, they came in and they, Wyndham paid their CDBLP bill. I was never told that there was a reduction in that bill. We were never given an option to weigh in on a, and a reduction on that. At some levels, I don't, I don't want to mess with the administration. Mayor, that is your job, and God love you, I wouldn't want it. But when we're talking about almost a quarter of a million dollars, $240,000 in, in fees for CDBLP bills, that is a big enough issue that this council should have been engaged in. I brought this up just last week. I have constituents whose bills are high right now, who are experiencing real stress and duress because everything else has gone up. How does it look when we're paying, we're giving a break to someone who still owns that building? It's not gone bankrupt. So I just want to be real clear. I did not mention any details, except the one point that was in the newspaper article, which was that a consensus was reached. There was no consensus. And I think that the rest of my colleagues would agree with that point. There is a real, there's a real value in making sure that we uphold the Open Meetings Act, and I will continue to defend that position. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we all, we all should. I mean-
Yes, we should.
We said it to the reporter, so I don't know what else you want us to say. It's whatever they put in writing.
Well, I would have liked to have not said there was a consensus.
But with regards to that, this council voted $1 million of relief to businesses, and we allowed CWLP to provide that. So, you know, it's a, you know, the one point, there's numerous points that we could discuss, like the Wyndham has our 911 system tower on the, on top of the roof. So everybody can say, let's shut off the power. Okay, and then I guess Police Chief Scarlett and Blau can come up and tell us the impact of that. I mean, it's way more than a quarter million dollars, low response times and everything else. So you have to look at the totality of the picture. Don't try to paint a picture, but look at the totality of the situation and the direction we moved. And so, you know, we collected 1.2 million dollars. I know that doesn't, maybe it seems small to everybody around this horseshoe, sure not to me, especially, you know, once the audio is provided, I think that's what will come out. And so we were in a, you know, very, you know, when we make decisions on the council, it's based on the information we have at that point in time. And so that's what goes each day. Because I think when we make a decision on budget, last year, it's totally different from this year. And so it's the same thing with this situation. More information comes to light, that's the beauty of hindsight. But at that point in time, I guarantee you, if we were to brought forward and people thought it was going to hit the wall, which we all did, they would have said, yes, settle it, make it settled. But regardless, we'll, we'll have the audio coming forward. Everybody believes in the Open Meetings Act, at least I do, and I think most of the colleagues are, or all the colleagues around the table, so we'll move forward in that direction. Alderman Redpath?
I didn't want to talk on this, but since I got dragged into it, I'm going to say. You know, the comments that we make around this, in that room in there, is, I didn't, I wasn't against negotiating for this, but we didn't think there was going to, the contractor was going to go without it coming back to us. I think that was the, that was the problem that we had, is that we, we understood that there was negotiations going on and that, but we felt that it was going to come back to us. And, you know, I was stunned myself when I heard $250,000 was, was part of it, but, you know, it, it's all how everybody interprets it, and we have never taken a vote in there because we don't have the authority to take a vote in there.
Correct.
We always do it out here. So that's the way I feel. And I got another thing, but I'll come back to that later. Thank you.
I want to stand on this for a second, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Donlin, then Alderman McMenamin.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I want to clarify.
Wait, Alderman Donlin.
Who's going, Mayor?
Alderman Donlin.
I'm kind of confused there. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question regarding, actually, a comment regarding the resolution that we've been asked to put on first reading. And typically, what we do is we, we'll go into executive session and take a look at the list of executive sessions that we've had in the past, and, and, you know, kind of get a feel for a recommendation from Corporation Council on what should be, what could be released, and then we come back in open session and formally take that vote. Since we're being asked to pass a resolution, which I intend on supporting, by the way, I just want to be clear about, I've taken the opportunity to review the audio, but how do we go, and I guess the question is, Mr. Clerk, how do we go about reviewing the minutes? Because I want to make sure the minutes are consistent with what the audio, audio recording is before I vote on that.
You just come into my office and I provide them to you?
Come into your office? Okay, thank you. And then my second ques, my second comment is really a question that relates to something Mr. Zirkle said, because I believed that this council passed a resolution a few years ago, excuse me, in audits a few years ago, that clearly said that when an entity or individual is turned over to collections, that the fees are passed on to that individual, it doesn't come out of the, their share. So in other words, it would not be deducted, the city would not get less money. I hope that applies to the utility as well as the corporate, corporate fund. Is that the case or not, Mr. Zirkle?
The, the existing contract, I think with ProCom, has them being paid fees because of their giving utilities, not fines or taxes. Doug may be able to address that. It is coming up for renewal, you know, RFP renewal process right now, is my understanding.
Yeah, but they should pay, they should pay the fee. I understand the fee part, but we passed an ordinance, I believe, that passes, instead of the city getting, paying the fee, the individual is being turned over.
I think it's in the contract.
No, but I thought that it was-
Yeah, I mean, in the contract, that's something that, I think it was changed, it's been a while, a while back. I know we've had a couple renewals with it.
So who pays the fees?
But it is, the fees are paid by the customer.
Right, so the city doesn't get less money, the city gets its full amount. That's what, that's my point.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman McMenamin?
And we don't need another ordinance.
Yep, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, we don't need another ordinance, because if that wasn't the answer, then we're going to do one, so.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, just to clarify what I was saying, that there was consensus. By consensus, I mean that there was consensus to allow the administration, the mayor, and the city Corporation Council to exercise discretion and judgment. That's the impression I got from that meeting, and there was no one that said, okay, you're going to bring this back to us. In fact, that's never been the practice here. In my 12 years on the city council, I can't think of a debt that's been brought back to the council for approval when there's been some negotiation on the resolution of the debt. So I think the practice has been what was done here. Our, our mayor and our city attorney wanted to exercise discretion and judgment, they wanted to hear from the council about their exercise of that discretion and judgment, and they got no pushback. And so, no, there was no decision made back there that was binding on the city or binding on Wyndham. It was a decision of, do we allow the judgment and the exercise of discretion to be... Take place here, and that's appropriate. I think, you know, the mayor didn't have to ask us for feedback, but he did. So I think that's all positive for the mayor and our city attorney and Mr. Brown, our utility director, because he didn't want to be on the hot seat either for doing something that would be viewed as controversial. And, you know, there was a lot going on there. Who knows how bad the debt was going to become? It was growing, significantly growing, and we didn't want to turn off the lights. And so I think it was handled properly. And now we can let the public decide for themselves when they listen to the tape.
Alderman Hanar and then Alderman Repath.
Thank you. A couple things. Number one, on the antennas up there, I did find out from Dave Mendenhall with the county that the 911 system, that's their backup antenna. So I found that out. The one intended that there's a problem is for the Starcom, for the city police. I also have found out that the county is in the process of putting up four towers throughout to alleviate that issue.
Great.
So at that point, I also found out they believe, they're still checking into it, that it's a separate meter that power... That the power goes through and it's paid for, they believe, by the city of Springfield. So Wyndham doesn't pay our utility bill on those, is what they believe. So they're still checking into it. So now, having said that, there... I would like to know, because I looked, where in our city code does it allow us to forgive debt? Any of us? I would like to... I'd like to see that statute if I could, Mr. Zirkle, because I don't know that we have a statute that really lets us forgive debt. And if, you know... Please bring it forward. As far as... I don't believe that anyone would... Up here would believe that just because we go back and we give a consensus, that that totally disregards our rules of purchases and everything else that were... Things have to come through us. Because if that's the case, anyone could go back there. And I'm not just saying this administration... Administrations could go back there, talk about something, and feel that that gives them carte blanche to spend however many amount of money. And then they can totally go around this body. I don't believe that. I just... And I don't think... I think of anything, it could have been oversight. It should have come back here. And if that's the case, we need an ordinance. But I thought it was already in our rules that any type of contracts and all that have to come through us over a certain amount of money. Am I wrong on that? But just because we go back in executive session does not stop that rule. It doesn't suspend the rule. That's the big part that I have here. So we could debate this all night, but that's where I'm coming from. And anybody that says that it does, that puts us in a slippery slope. Not maybe for us, but down the future for something bad to happen.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, just for next week, I'd like to know when that bill was actually paid. I wasn't sure of that. I do remember... So the executive session was in November of '21. And then in the summer of '22, when Mr. Bravavi, Al Bravavi, the owner of Wyndham, came in. At that point, he was saying... And he said that in the open session, that he had plenty of money, that he could pay the bill in full. Like, there were no concerns about that. So I'd just like to know when exactly he did pay his bill? Because if he could have paid it in full, it would have been nice if he had. So, yeah, just for next week, if we could have that information.
Sure.
Thank you very much, sir.
Alderman McMinim.
Yeah, I think this is a good discussion. I think it's important to flush out what the rules are. There's no problem with that. If we need to clarify it, we can clarify it. Recall now, we got a check in by wire transfer. I don't think there's any agreement or, you know, a stipulation with the sender of that check that this would eliminate. I mean, we could have turned back the check. I think there was disclosure that we'd received a check. Maybe it was... Maybe we should have gone into executive session again. But I think... I don't fault the mayor and the city attorney for interpreting the meeting behind closed doors. It's very unusual for us to go back there to talk about a debt situation. I don't think it happens very often. This was an unusual situation. And, you know, the good news is we got a lot of money, a million-plus dollars. So, you know, we can flush this out some more. And we need to clarify things. And I don't think the administration tried to politicize this situation. They were just responding to a reporter. You know, what are you supposed to say when a reporter comes to you with insinuations that something wrong, that something bad has happened? Actually, it was something good. We got a million-plus dollars. So that's all I got to say for now.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, I apologize for speaking again, but Alderman McMinim's comments caused me to think of a question. If we... If my numbers are right, we got a $1.2 million check. And if he owed $1.4, can we still collect the $200,000? And if we could look into that, that would be wonderful. Because just because they send a partial payment... First of all, I don't know why we wouldn't accept it. That doesn't bind us to mean that it's... Everything's paid off. But if we can still collect it, and there was no agreement, then maybe we can still collect it and make it whole. So, thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Any other unfinished business?
Yeah, it's...
Alderman Repath.
Okay, now we got that out of the way. So last week, we talked about red light cameras for intersections throughout the city that we're having troubles with people running red lights and that kind of thing. And we know that the legislature has not approved that yet, but Peoria has passed a resolution to support installment of red light cameras in their city. And that's probably pending at the legislature. I'd like to ask for a resolution, Mr. Corporation Council, to be drafted for us to be included in that. I really think that'll be very beneficial to the city because we have some intersections in this town that people blow the lights on a regular basis. And there's a lot of people getting hurt. A lot of people getting hurt. And Alderman Donlin was one of them where it happened. And so if you wouldn't mind, Corporation Council, I would appreciate it if you would draft a resolution that we could follow up with the city of Peoria and ask the legislature to consider that.
I'd like to be a cosponsor, please.
Sure.
Any other unfinished business?
Mayor.
Yep, Alderman Williams.
This resolution and what we want to do... I mean, right now, in my mind, it sounds like something we would want to do, but how does it operate? Like, do they take a picture of you while you're running through it?
Yeah.
Chief will come up and talk about it.
Didn't Chicago do this before?
Yes. And several suburbs also.
Yeah.
I personally don't have all the specifics on how it operates, but yes, it takes a picture of the license plate, as I understand it, and then would mail a citation to the registered owner if it was set up in that fact.
And that's at the discretion of the police department, whether it's an actual violation or not, based on the information we have with the camera.
I presume we could put the rules in place as to how we would enforce that here locally.
But I think it's important, though, that we follow up with this resolution to the legislature so we're on record as if somebody had stopped this because this is a big problem for Springfield.
So has it been proven that with the cities that have it, that it did stop the running of red... I mean, since a child, people run red lights. So what I'm asking is, is there a decrease because of the red light cameras?
I'll be honest with you. I don't have any facts, one way or the other.
So I would be interested in some information, chief, on places that have these red light cameras, what the impacts have been on the citizens.
I think there's only eight counties throughout the entire state that has the legislative approval to have the red light cameras.
Like a test case or something, or...
I'm 100% sure on that.
I just want us to have enough information before we pass a resolution that's going to have impacts like this on any citizen. Thank you.
I mean, did Chicago did this? Is it still in place?
Right.
And what happened?
Recently?
Corporation Council.
Yeah, but I think Chicago had problems.
Oh, you did?
Well, I requested a resolution. Bring it. He can vote now if he wants to.
Mayor.
Yep, Alderman Hanar.
I kind of did a study, you know, on this, a little background way back. And of course, there were some issues with some... I'll call it for what I believe is bribes up there on... You know, it was ugly. Where they had the problem... Where they had the problems were when people were turning right on red. And I'm more worried about people going straight.
Sure.
And I know that, you know... I think I agree with Alderman Repath. We got a problem in this town. You know, we got a speeding problem, but this is one that's bad. And, you know, I think out in Ward Four, out at Sangamon and Dirksen, I think that that's one that people run all the time because they've had... They have an accident about, what, one a day, John, don't they? You know...
Highest in the state.
You know, we could definitely... I think it would be worth a trial, but we got to go to the legislature first. And I just think if it doesn't hurt to try it, if it's something that just doesn't work for us or we find out more information and it's just not what we want, at least we have the opportunity if we do. If we find out it's not good, then we just don't move forward with it.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly on the red light camera thing, I think a lot of the pushback was due process information of people being found guilty before they had their day in court. So there's been... It's been slowed down on that matter. I think that, you know, I think the ACLU would have, you know, some words for us with that. So I think we should, Mr. Zirkle, reach out to them and get an opinion before we even started and then have to stop it and hold it just to make sure that that is okay. But along in that, you know, I want a resolution as well. There is some legislation that is going to be worked on on cannabis setbacks by LaShawn Ford, Representative Ford. And he will be commissioning a study that'll take about eight to 12 months. And I definitely want our setbacks to be looked at and to be considered in that study as well. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderman DeSantis.
He said a lot of what I was going to say.
Alderman Conley.
I just want to say, Mayor, I'm getting messages that the live feed was... Has been interrupted for the council meeting, so just...
They missed all that?
I know.
They have that minutes back in their life.
Unbelievable.
So just in case, I just want to make the point. Yeah, I don't know when it was stopped, but...
Good rerun.
I know tomorrow, I will announce this since this is simpler. The cable access channel four and 18 will be going off air tomorrow due to upgrades. They're doing upgrades. Yep. Alderman Hanar is in charge of the cable.
He's the COAX kid.
They just did it early.
Alderman Gregory.
Just real quickly, Mr. Zirkle, one more thing. We passed on this council when Senator Turner was here, a non-gas station convenience ordinance. And I would like us to look at that. And I know over the last past year, you know, since we passed that, we've had multiple of these smaller convenience stores popping up in many vacant buildings. And I really want to look at it. I'm considering a moratorium on that if we can since we do have a license in for that. They're supposed to be coming to get a license for that. And the reason why I say that, you know, every building, you know, on the east side is starting to become these small convenience stores that are just a pain at times, some of them. So, you know, we want good things in our community. We don't want a bunch of convenience stores and things like that. Convenience stores are nice, but we want some good things that are going to help our community grow. So I just want to look at that and consider it. Thank you.
And then budget amendments are due Friday, is that right, Julie? Yep.
I'm trying to...
Alderman DeSantis.
Thank you. Are we on new business?
Yes, new business.
There is an election in 59 days. And it gets a little wacky in here. So let's just try to be respectful of each other. My name is not on the ballot. Thank you. Let's be respectful of each other. We have opposing interests around this council. We can still do it respectfully. So let's try to do that. When reporters call us, they've often already researched an issue. And a lot of the issues they research are public record, including divorces, including drunk driving, including all kinds of things. So, you know, sometimes we hear things for the first time from a reporter and we're asked to give a response. There are certain issues that are very triggering for me personally. One of them happens to be domestic violence or domestic abuse. That's all I'm going to say about that. But you can imply or infer what you want from that statement. So let's just, moving forward, try to respect everyone around this council, everyone who's running for anything. And let's not turn every city council meeting or every committee of the whole meeting till April 4th into a candidate forum because that's not what this is supposed to be. We're here to do the people's business. We're not here to do the candidates bidding.
Any other new business?
Yeah. Mayor, I think it would be helpful... It would be helpful if we wouldn't talk city business with them then. Because like she's saying, it is election time and they are hungry for whatever. But some of these issues, when they take it and put it out there, it's going to provoke the questions. And we have to reply to the questions. So sometimes it's not really us around the shoe doing it. It's just like you said, it's reporters doing what they perceive to be their job. Because when reporters ask me questions, I usually try to answer, you know.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Williams, I respectfully... I'm not going to argue for less communication with our media. I think they... We don't have enough in here as it is.
You don't have any?
Lone Ranger. We're able to say, you know, I don't feel comfortable responding to that. That's obviously...
But if I'm comfortable, why would I say it?
Well, if you're comfortable, then I think you should. And I agree with you on that.
So I was speaking for myself.
But I will... No, I'm sorry, Mayor. I understand where Alderman Williams is coming from, and I agree with you on that. I will just say that, you know, if I have... If I'm asked a question that I'm not comfortable responding to, I let them know that. But I certainly would... I hope that we don't throw cold water on interacting with the media, for better or for worse. I mean, I know I've looked like a fool plenty of times. I mean, I know I've looked like a fool plenty of times. But again, it's, it's part of our, it's part of our relationship with the community. And, and it's how people, not everyone wants to tune into this, and possibly we lost some live feed anyway. So, I, I would just caution, it's, it is very important that, that we make sure that we're open and accessible to the media. And I only comment on things that are publicly available information also. I don't talk about rumors, I don't talk about.
Gossip.
Background gossip, executive session. So, just leave that there. Thank you.
As a reminder, the city is closed Monday for Lincoln's birthday, which is Sunday. There's activities.
Who's birthday?
Abe's.
16th president.
Any other new business? We have two individuals sign up to speak. One is Bob Emo. If you come forward and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate
Good evening. My name is Bob Emo. I live at 525 East Pine. I'm currently in Ward Six, but after April 4th, I will be in Ward Two. I am also a, a commissioner with the Historic Sites Commission. Mayor Langfelder appointed to be in November of 2020. I believe I was appointed to fill the unexpired term of alderwoman purchase. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that I think could be improved with the Office of Economic Development and Planning that we've encountered. Prior to, last year, Mesfin Lentz was our liaison. He left about the middle of last year, and Ravi Doshi took over the position. And I want to take you through a timeline and tell you about some actions that I feel are just not professional or need to be improved upon as far as business processes. First of all, the, we have our meetings quarterly, okay? That is in the bylaws. The, says the, we meet on the second Monday of each month, Municipal Center, East Room 108. Since I've been a commissioner, it's always been over in the Carnegie Room over at the library. Not a problem. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, when we say quarterly, that means every three months on the second Monday. It is so easy to plug that date in. And that's what I do on my calendar. On June 8th, he asked to move the meeting from 6:13, June 13th to June 20th. Okay, no problem. June 20th, on that day, he sent out the agenda, but no minutes with the previous meeting. He said Mesfin didn't leave him any notes or anything like that. That's fine. Come August, I sent an email to him on August 24th saying, hey, is the meeting still on for September 12th? And he answers, yes. Then, all of a sudden, he moves the meeting on the 31st from September 12th to September 19th with no explanation. Actually, I'm sorry. His explanation was the meeting room was not available. Okay? So, we have our September meeting on the 19th. And I had brought up in that meeting that the Horseman Building was turning 50 years old. And through my own research, I found out, guess what? What's really cool? They put a time capsule in 50 years ago. And guess when it was supposed to be opened? Last year in 2022. So, I was trying to figure out, hey, was it opened up? So, Molly Burns, who's also a commissioner, suggested to Ravi to reach out to the mayor, and perhaps the mayor could call up Horseman CEO, Marita Zoradis, and say, hey, do you know anything about this time capsule? And your building is turning 50 years old, so it's now eligible to be recognized as a historic site. A lot of people don't realize that that building has a very significance to it. It was designed by Minoru Yamakase, who also designed the World Trade Center in New York City. So, we have that to our claim to fame. I reached out to Ravi on October 20th and November 2nd saying, hey, did you hear anything back from Mayor Langfelder? No response. All right, so that takes us up to our December meeting on December 12, I'm sorry, December 2nd. I said, is the meeting still on for 12:12? He said, yes. On 12:09, he says, I'm sorry, the meeting's got to be moved to 12:19. On 12:19, I get a, I get an email from Doug Antonacci on that same day, on that same morning, saying the meeting has been canceled. We're going to have it, try to reschedule it sometime in January. So, here I am waiting, January 18th, Doug Antonacci sends a meeting, sends a message out saying the meeting has been scheduled to January 23rd, but no minutes because the minutes were resting on Ravi Doshi's laptop, not on a server. Okay? I checked, and I know I'm over time. We have 28 boards and commissions, so I don't know what's going on on the other 27 boards and commissions. Only four of those boards and commissions receive a stipend. My commission does not receive a stipend. In other words, I'm volunteering my time. I told you, I go out and I set aside time four times a month, and I rearrange my schedule for that meeting. And when somebody comes in at the last minute and says, sorry, I'm moving the meeting. We do not live in a silo, okay? His actions affect other people's actions. Here's an interesting thing. I called up Denise Fisher, who is with the Public Library this afternoon. I said, Denise, do we have the meeting room scheduled? Because I looked for 2023, our next meeting is going to be March 13th. I said, do we have the meeting room scheduled for March 13th? And guess what the answer was? No. I, so I took it upon myself to schedule the meeting room for March 13th. I said, Denise, just, is it plausible? Is it possible that somebody could, at the very beginning of the year, schedule out all four dates during the year? Yeah, sure, no problem. So, what's going on in the department? Why are they not doing something as simple as scheduling the meeting room out at the beginning of the year for all of these dates, so that we don't have to juggle, juggle them around? Why aren't minutes and important documents being stored on a centralized server rather than somebody's laptop? Suppose that Ravi had been hit by a bus, and we don't know where his laptop is? I mean, is this any way to do business with the city? Thank you.
Actually, the laptop should be backed up to the server, so we'd have to check that out. But with regards, hopefully you did the year-long scheduling. If not, we'll check on it. Doug Antonacci is actually the representative since Ravi's absence, so we appreciate it. But were there any discussions with Horseman? If not, we're bringing forward a new ordinance. You know, we'll have those discussions with regards to the time capsule, but that's news to myself.
Okay, there you go. I am bringing it forward. Perhaps maybe you would like to make a phone call sometime this week.
Well, we will be seeing him, definitely next week. Council's going to have a open discussion on a new ordinance that's coming forward with a project that they're pursuing.
Yes, okay.
We will find out about the time capsule.
Okay, but I, I hope that I brought forward important lapses in business processes and the, you know, infamous, it fell through the crack type of thing.
Sure.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Then we have, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman McMinim.
Bob, thanks for coming to the council. And I know you, the last time you were here, you talked about that plaque that was on the building that got demolished. And I, I think we got that resolved. You know, it was a Lincoln-related plaque that was historic in nature. So, thanks for bringing that to the city's attention. And your father was a frequent communicator in Ward Seven before he passed away last, last, last year.
Yes.
And he would call, you know, frequently. And, and you've called frequently too. On this situation here, I don't know if you've read the Illinois Times or what's been going on, but it, it, you know, some of those missed dates or missed situations might be because, you know, Mr. Ravi Doshi is on personal leave right now. And, and before that, he had a reput, a very positive reputation for having, you know, 20 balls, 30 balls in the air, doing all kinds of economic development activities. So, the, his, his service to the Historic Sites Commission was additional duties. And I can understand how sometimes things kind of can fall between the cracks, as you put it. And it's, it's unfortunate if it was happening. And, but I, I would hate to view this situation right now that you're describing as, you know, kicking a man when he's down, you know? You know, it, I'm, I'm just, he's going through a very personal, he asked for personal leave for personal, private reasons. I don't think there's been, he's had very good relations with the alderpersons and getting back to alderpersons and answering and working with so many businesses, that I don't think that, you know, his leave was for city business reasons. And so, to the extent people have made it a public concern, you know, that's unfortunate. You know, everyone's entitled to some privacy when, when they are going through difficult times, difficult, very difficult personal times. And so, you know, as far as, you know, disclosure, I thought, when I saw that on the, that you're, I thought you were going to talk about disclosure, there should have been more disclosure about Mr. Doshi. But the facts are, we get significant disclosure. The mayor tells us a lot about a lot of things. And, and for example, I'm just going to cite the fact, we get from, from Human Resources, every month, we get a list of everyone that's been hired by name. We get a list of everyone that's been discharged by name. And in 12 years, I can't think of any time an alderman has tried to make a public issue of those, maybe once in a while, you know, a, a public discharge from this body, from the city, from the city government, is what I'm trying to say. But with Mr. Doshi, I, I respect him a lot. I wish I could call him on the cell phone and kind of pick him up because of, of the tough time he's been in the news. That's tough for a 30-year-old man, you know, that thick skin like most of us around here to get from service. It's, it's rough. And so, I just wanted to add that. I feel bad that, I feel bad for the Historic Sites Commission if you didn't get the service you were expecting. And I'm not asking for you to comment, I'm just wanted to put that out in the record.
But before you leave, if you'd, Doug Antonacci will introduce himself if you haven't done so. And we appreciate you coming to, I think it was Ward Two meeting, too. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before Doug speaks.
Alderman Gregory.
I, I do, I do agree with, with Alderman McMinim. That, that's a, a younger man, and he's doing a good job in our, you know, in our Economic Development Department. Things do happen. So, you're going to be in Ward Two now, so as you work through stuff, and if you try to get ahold of the mayor or get ahold of somebody and it doesn't drop, let me know. Like, not six months down, like, right then, let me know, and I'll make some calls and we'll get you an answer. Because, you know, I agree with, I agree with them, you know, it's bad timing, you know, for him, you know, and, and for us probably to be even, even discussing this. You know, there was ample time, it sounds like, in your timeline to let us know that, hey, you know, you would like some things done differently. So, next time, in the future, going forward, just let me know, and, and we'll take care of you.
Okay, and, and again, it's not about Mr. Doshi, it's about the business process that needs to be improved.
You get it? So, next time a business process don't go straight, call me that day or the next day, and I got you. We'll, we'll take care of you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is Isaac Jones. Is Isaac here? Anybody else wish to address the council? If you come forward and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate
You, Isaac? Yeah, I know who I am, James Johnson. I live in Ward Two, lifelong member. I got one question, and I'm going to just keep it at one question for today. But I'll be back in two weeks. And it'll be my first year's speech to this horseshoe. So, Mayor, I'm going to go directly to you. In light of what had happened on the railroad situation, that train that left Illinois and went into Ohio, is anybody in our community informed when hazardous material are coming through our community?
Chief Blau can answer that.
Okay.
Attempt to. Regarding hazardous materials and the transportation thereof, on the rail especially.
There's stuff that goes through town all the time, and no, we, we aren't made aware every time that something comes through. I know that whenever there's an incident, we had an incident a year and a half ago over off of 72, we were called immediately. We checked with the train company to find out what the manifest said, and it was on it, there was nothing on it at that time. Generally, when a catastrophe happens, the, the system is pretty quick. But there's a lot of trains who go, that go through Springfield and go through other areas. And unless the, somebody else has better information than I do, I do, I have never received a, this is what's coming through our city on a daily basis.
Was there a way to get the information, I guess?
For every train that comes through?
For hazardous material? I mean, if it's hazardous.
Not, not that I know of. I'll, I'll look into it, though. I mean, I don't know if there's a.
We're, we're working on the rail project, so we could ask Union Pacific and Norfolk Southern and Hanson Engineers.
Chief, does Iema, does Iema have, that, I think they might have some information on that.
They may, and if they, but if they do, they do not disseminate it to my office.
I think that's for Homeland Security reasons why they do that, but they might be able to give you more information.
Okay, I'll look into that. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. But in, in light of what happened, I'm going to put it out and make a suggestion that whenever there's that type of hazardous material moving through our community, if anybody should know about it, then our fire department chief, they should know. We don't need any incidents like that happening in our community. And the majority of tracks are Third Street and East. So, I'm going to speak up for the people who live east of all these tracks. It's concerning when something like that can happen in 2023. So, let's take that serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Anybody else wish to address the council? Your motion for adjournment?
You betcha.
All in favor, say aye. All say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.